You're okay. We're distanced. So you're okay.
I'd like to call the Thursday, March 18th North Bradford Board of Education meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Roll call?
Chairman Papalholzer here.
Vice Chair Nakario.
Here.
Secretary Siena.
Jennifer Osamo.
Here.
Jeffrey McMillan.
Here.
Vince Mace.
Here.
Cynthia Rice.
And to the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't move your hands up to the right. Don't move your hands up.
No, no students yet.
Okay, we go on for three minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 24th, 2021 Board of Education meeting, special meeting.
Second.
Vince, I'm looking at you.
Okay.
All good?
Yeah.
Roll call, but I think they're all here, but just in case.
Chairman Papalholzer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Nakario.
Yes.
Jennifer Osamo.
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan.
Yes.
Vince Mace.
Yes.
There's no resignations at this time, appointments?
Not at this time.
Okay. And leaves?
No leave.
One time a week.
Thank you. As you recall, the last board meeting, we discussed donations for a playground at Tuckett Valley Elementary School. They were going to be looking at various pieces of equipment, a full court basketball court, and it was very generous of the PTO to make an $8,100 donation towards this project. So firstly, we'd like to thank Dr. Welch and the PTO for their hard work and efforts making this a reality. I know that we've started to do some of the groundwork, and that's underway, and we're hoping as the weather gets warmer, the kids will get out this year to be able to enjoy.
Absolutely, and I would just like to thank John Florio and Fran Marola. It's been a really collaborative effort, people pitching and helping out, make sure it's a product that's done to benefit the students, but doesn't cost effectively. So, and I'm really thankful to the PTO as well. It's going to benefit lots of us and students for years to come.
Great. And we have John Florio here tonight, so, perfect. And we thank Fran Marola for his effort. So with that being said, we need a motion to accept that donation.
I'm so to accept the donation. Was it $8,000?
$8,100.
$8,100? I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Exhibit B, communications. You have a list of things that the administrative team has been doing in their respective schools. If there's any questions, they're here this evening. It's been quite busy. They're obviously coming off of the winter season and at the high school level, and we're getting ready for spring sports and the other buildings. We're hoping to see some more things be able to open up as we move forward over the next several weeks. So that's exciting. There's hope in the air, and if you do have any questions, they're certainly here to answer them.
Yeah, it's still pretty busy considering we're still under COVID, you know, restrictions.
Yeah.
Still getting a lot done. I think it's great.
Okay, kindergarten registration. As you know, we're underway. It's hard to believe. We're starting to process and do interviews and virtual interviews and getting to know our youngsters for the kindergarten placement next year. At the time of the printing, we had 94 students who had registered for kindergarten, and as of today, Beth, we're at 105.
We have 135.
Oh, wow.
Which is a really healthy number considering usually during the summertime, we get a spike of, we could get 10 to 15 additional students. So this is a really strong number right now going into the summer. We think what we're possibly going to see is some families that might have held out in August, September, October, birthday child and waited this next year with everything going on. So we think we're going to have a real strong kindergarten enrollment, which is...
Do you have a maximum number?
We don't have a maximum. So whoever comes, we get, and then we would staff accordingly.
How many do we have this year, Beth?
Currently, we have 105. Is that what we're at for next year already? Correct.
That's all right.
Okay.
So we would always add a staff number. We never can, we can't say no to a kindergarten.
I agree.
Scott, do we need to prepare that for the budget, or are we okay with...
We're okay. We're fine right now with that. You're looking at an additional 20-plus enrollments. That would really be an impact number. That's something that we would gauge as we go through, and then we would look to approve another section or another, you know, teacher or move it, you know, strategically.
Under the stimulus package, the state is getting money that could go down to schools for extra staffing. Are we able to...
Well, it's more towards mental health and things, not for enrollment-based, but we're doing a lot with, you know, the monies we have coming back, making sure our facilities are ready, our mental health staff, if we need to increase any of our resources there.
Okay.
So we're taking advantage of that as well. So, okay, thank you. Okay, and the next part, we have Bill Conen here. You received a great deal of information in a mailing, and it was to go through and review policy and procedure. We had asked that if you had any questions, to, you know, save them for tonight or forward them. So all of you know Attorney Conen. So with that being said, Mr. Conen, there's a microphone here if you want to sit there.
I'll sit right here. Thank you, Superintendent Schoolmaker, and thank you, members of the board, for inviting me to your meeting tonight.
Before we start, Bill, I just want to say, I have my phone open, which I normally don't do in a board meeting. I have that because there's certain questions I want to ask, and they are on my phone. So I just don't want to be rude.
Yep.
And the other thing is board members, please make sure you're aware, you cannot ask questions about any specific issue. These are about policies and procedures.
Thank you. I think everybody agrees that the safety of the students in your school district is your utmost priority. And tonight, we're just going to revisit some of the many policies and statutes that are in place that assure that that safety is always paramount in the operation of the school district. Some of you have got packets of some of the policies. Anyone in the community can immediately go online on their cell phones or home computers and access all the board's policies that address the issues of sexual harassment, sex abuse, violence. Unfortunately, these are things that need to be addressed by a school board, and they stem from a variety of state and federal laws. And probably the primary law that comes to mind in Connecticut is one that's not in your packet, but this is me bringing in a statute that is sort of the source document for all of these policies or for many of the ones that have to do with abuse. And that's 17A-101, and this is the policy that deals with the mandated reporter law. And as most people know, that school employees are included among a very long list of people that goes from physicians to dentists to licensed practical nurses, social workers, a long list of people that, over 30 different people in categories that are mandated reporters. But there's one that's dedicated just to any school employee as defined by, and this is criminal statute that they mention when they refer to the definition of school employees found in 53A-65. And it means a teacher, a substitute teacher, school administrator, school superintendent, guidance counselor, school counselor, psychologist, social worker, nurse, physician, school paraprofessional or coach employed by a local Board of Education, or any other person who, in the performance of his or her duties, has regular contact with students and provides services to or on behalf of students by way of a contract with the Board of Education. So that's a lot of people in your school district. It's basically A to Z. So that is, who has to report? What do they have to report? Well, in the law, there are different standards that apply to different scenarios. If a police officer wants to pull you over, they have to have probable cause. If you're going to be convicted of a crime, it's beyond a reasonable doubt. If you are found to be liable in civil court, it's by a preponderance of the evidence. Those standards are somewhere up around here, and they are high to protect the accused and innocent until proven guilty. The standard that we have for a mandated reporter is the opposite end of the spectrum. It's a standard that is best described as error on behalf of the kids, error on behalf of the safety of the students. This is all that they have to have in order to report someone. In the course, in the ordinary course of a person's employment or profession, if a mandated reporter has reasonable cause to suspect or believe, think about that. All a mandated reporter has to have is a reasonable cause to suspect or believe that any child under the age of 18 has been abused or neglected, and it goes through the litany of things that, depending upon the circumstances in a hospital, it's a little bit different. The law lays out through policies and through regulations, a variety of different things to look out for. Your policy, your policy that's enacted in response to that, lays out in detail things that school personnel should look for, that are indicators of abuse. And the school personnel are required to report that regardless of where the source of that abuse may come from. So it could come from outside the school environment, or it could come from within the school environment. And there are different requirements in terms of the reporting, but only really in terms of which pipe they go into. It's the same standards, just a reasonable cause to suspect or believe. So that's the duty to report. Virtually all of the professionals and even the paraprofessionals have the obligation to report. And what happens if they don't report?
Can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
Are you reading from our current policy now?
I'm reading for this, no, this is a statute from which your policy was derived. It's the source document. Your policy that would be the one that is an enactment of that would be your student 1,000 series, and this is the 1,016. So you have, you're...
Can you tell me the last time? It should be dated at the bottom. When was reviewed?
Yes, it was reviewed in January four years ago.
So Mary, can you please put in the minutes that I have all of our policies on allegations filed and reviewed by our attorneys?
You also, of course, have your school climate plan that you reviewed a year ago, December 2019. And these come up routinely, and whenever our office becomes aware of a change in the law, we automatically contact your school administration, and we advise you that you need to update the policies. And in fact, some recent changes in the federal law on Title IX and discrimination, not abuse, but discrimination, harassment, those changes occurred just recently this past summer, and so that's kind of work in progress, and we have staff that can come out and train personnel.
So I have another question. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So we have, we know now who's a mandated reporter, right? When people are entering our school system, do they go through abuse training so that they are clearly aware? And how often do that does that training? And Scott, you may be able to answer that better. How often did they have to rehab it? Now, I know I'm a mandated reporter too. I'm a social worker, so I know every year I have to take that. Is that similar in our school system?
Yes, it's exactly the same. You have an annual refresher course. Another agency that helps to act as a resource to the school community is the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities. So that's the body of law that prohibits discrimination on a variety of levels, but sex discrimination is included in there, sex harassment. So they have, I think, online courses that...
All, all ways. I think April 5th, Suzanne, is our date that finished by? Yeah, so April 5th.
And it's documented in every employee's file that they completed it?
Yeah.
If they don't complete it for some reason, what happens?
They get told to do it.
Will they be suspended?
They can be terminated.
Okay. So it has to be completed?
Has to be done. Every employee.
All right.
Very serious. In your policy, for years, it's in your policy as well, that every year, they get, every girl in the community gets notified, so the kids get it in the handbook, parents get it through the handbooks and distribution to the home communities. Employees all take courses in it and have access to it, and then all of this is on the internet on your webpage.
Right, I know, but...
Yeah, you lose track.
People tend to listen, right? They want to hear it, and so I'm going to ask the questions so that people can hear it, and they don't have to go through the policies and procedures when there's, you know?
That's why we're here.
It can be tedious, so I'm asking questions to help educate. Okay. And just one more question. So we know who reports, right? Like, we know teachers. It could be a sub, it could be a coach, it could be the superintendent, it could be the social worker. All right, now they have this allegation on their head. Who do they report it to? Where's it going? It has to go somewhere, right?
Well, there's a stat, you have a policy, 2,400, it's 25 pages long. I'm not sure if that one's in your packet. You have a number of policies that cover this, but 2,400 directs exactly how this is to be done. You have a Safe School Climate District Coordinator, who's behind me, Dr. Welch. You have the Superintendent of Schools. Virtually all the building administrators are familiar with how to channel the reporting. Just to give you an example...
But there's an 800 number as well, and you could go to the police?
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. Like, I just, I want, it doesn't always have to go through school personnel, so it's left in the school. It can go outside of the school. So if someone was, for some reason, upset, nervous, scared, they don't have to say it through school. They can, they can call the police, they can call the 800 hotline. There's several different avenues that may not be necessarily noted in the policy or procedure.
And nobody's going to say, no, don't start with us, start with somebody else. You have many different ways of getting in the car and getting to the destination where you want to go, whether it's DCF, police, or in this case, the educational agency in your community. But just as an example, Madam Chair, your policy 1016 starts out, "Procedures for Reporting Child Abuse and Sexual Assault." And the first one is directed to parents or guardians of students may file a written report of suspected child abuse or assault pertaining to any student enrolled in North Bradford Public Schools. So if it's something that's going on and they think it's connected in some way to the school, we are an avenue for us to receive that report, process the report, and within your policy on reporting, the professionals know when to bring in DCF, when to bring in the town police. Last year, right about this time, the Department of Children and Family Services, they implemented a brand-new task force that had been created exclusively for the purpose of addressing the needs of public educational facilities. Before, there was a kind of uneven analysis approach brought by that statewide agency. Some people had experience working with schools, some didn't have experience with working with schools, and so they found it to be more productive and more consistent if they had a dedicated task force, and I think it's about six people for the state that are dedicated to just investigating complaints that arise in a school setting. So everybody's trying to improve their game at all times and improve their ability to respond in a quick and thorough manner. So these are trained investigators.
So can we just get it straight? Sorry, I keep...
No, no.
As they come up, and it's relevant to your...
Pause them on.
So the police investigate independently of DCF?
Yes.
And are those the two bodies that investigate, or are there additional bodies?
Well, there's three basic ones. We are one. So this school system, under your Title IX policies, under your other policies, we investigate. So we investigate in two different ways. One way is to investigate, protect the victim. And then the other way is to investigate, terminate somebody who needs to be gotten out of the school community. So it's employee-related in terms of investigating any kind of malfeasance by an employee or adult under our control. And then the other is the investigation, prefer the child to the appropriate either medical facility or counseling or whatever may be appropriate under the circumstances. So that goes on with us. The police also have, of course, the authority and the charge to investigate any allegations that are of criminal nature, misdemeanors or felonies. And then the Department of Children and Family Services exists for the primary purpose of investigating abusive children or neglected children by adults. So those three are going on, but at the same time, you've got this, they're intertwined often with sex harassment, with bullying, with social media abuse. So you can bring into other, into this picture, the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities. If someone has had an event that falls more clearly under the harassment claim, then that's a fourth agency or government entity that can investigate that, and that exists on both the state and the federal level. So there are many, many places that you can go. One of your policies also lists a number of private facilities that can be recruited to for guidance, so there's no lack of resources available to anyone who has, and remember, all they need to have is a reasonable cause to suspect or believe.
And while this reasonable cause is being investigated, what happens to the person being accused? Are they put out on leave, or like, are they still in the school system? What happens in that case?
Well, it's pretty much routine practice that if someone's suspected of being an abusive adult, they get put out on leave. Because of the nature of the public sector employment, they go out on paid leave because of due process requirements. But basically, violence, sex and drugs, they go out on paid leave. We don't take risks with an adult like that who's been elected and have had those involvement. So that's the default setting.
And it's paid basically due to, why? I just, I, you said it, but I just didn't catch it.
Well, for me, it's sex, drugs and violence. If any one of those three is...
But why is it paid? Why is it not unpaid leave?
It has to be paid leave because the U.S. Constitution and the state constitution says you can't deprive somebody of assets without due process of law. Now, if you get to the point where they're going to be terminated, then they get due process and we cut off the leave, but this is just, that's the nature of being employed in the public sector. You go out on leave, and it's in our interest always to coordinate and to cooperate with these different agencies so that we don't take turns investigating. Whenever there's a child involved, it's paramount for the agencies to coordinate the efforts so there aren't multiple interviews with the same kids or with the same witnesses. And so sometimes you'll literally have an investigation going on in one room with one investigator being the lead questioner, but three others in the back of the room taking notes because they have a little bit different responsibility that they're going to have to fulfill. But this way, you're not exhausting your witnesses. So there are different ways that the agencies coordinate, and the end result is they've got a very easy entry. If anyone is wondering, should I report, report. Just as simple as that. If you haven't got a clear feeling that you don't need to report, report. What have you got to lose? It's, these agencies are saying, all you need to have is a reasonable cause to suspect, just to suspect or believe. So as I say, that bar is so low that you can't go wrong. And our courts have said that not just the victims' records are sealed, all the records regarding the people who are reporting are confidential records. So there's no way, don't report because I'm embarrassed if somebody says I did this. Report, because the idea is protect kids. And if you didn't, if your suspicion was unfounded, the last thing we want to do is defame or in any way destroy the careers of adults who have done nothing wrong. So the investigations are done in confidence, they're done thoroughly and professionally, and they are done to protect the kids first, but also to make sure that we don't have, you know, some kind of witch hunt going on for people that don't deserve to be maltreated by their workplace or employer.
So Bill, so we have a letter, a teacher out on leave, and an investigation is being done, DCF closes the case, the police close the case. What happens to that teacher that's out on leave?
Well, even...
Or that administrator or coach? Like, what happens to them?
Well, you didn't mention our third form. You can be a teacher that has done something that's wrong under your board policy that doesn't rise to the level of a violation of 17A-101 or a federal or state statute or criminal law. So you may find that you are going to initiate termination proceedings against that employee because they've done something that's prohibited by your board policy.
Okay.
By your employment relationship.
Okay.
Or they may be absolved of all wrongdoing. Could be a mistaken identity, it could be a million different things. So it's like anything. If somebody's, if the investigation done by DCF says no substantiation.
Yep.
If the police come back and they don't take any, they don't pursue charges, and if you've investigated and there hasn't been a transgression by the employee that rises to a level that would be terminable, then you still might, there still might be a letter in the file, there might be some judgment that you question in terms of the action that went on and the circumstances. So I'm not saying there's no discipline. There are gradations of discipline as well as the choice.
And it's documented in the files, so like, okay.
Yes, it's been filed. So just to give you an idea of the incentive that these mandated reporters have, remember, these are all people with careers, gone to school for a long time, and if they fail to report, the first time, they are guilty, they can be found guilty of a Class A misdemeanor. Now, the difference between misdemeanors and felonies in terms of the broad picture is misdemeanors can be punished up to one year in jail, felonies can be punished by more than one year in jail. The penalty is a Class A misdemeanor in Connecticut for failure to report. That's up to one year in jail. That's the highest, that's the maximum penalty for a misdemeanor. So if you can imagine a teacher who is found who failed to report, their career is in the toilet. That's the end. They're never going to work in public education, private education, and then they're going to go to jail for a year. So there is a huge incentive for anybody who has the suspicion or belief that there's been wrongdoing to this, to a child, to harm a child. So all of these, and of course, if you do it, if you know something that's going on and the violation is a subsequent one, you've already not reported once, you're doing it subsequent, then you really need to be careful because then you're vulnerable to a Class E felony, and that's one to three years in jail. And that can also come into place if the person had the actual knowledge that the child was abused or neglected or was, excuse me, or was a victim under this. So there's, there's no covering up in the year 2021 or, you know, probably in the last 20 years in Connecticut. These laws have been on the books for the most part for years. They protect kids, they keep getting refined by our legislature, and board policies keep getting adopted that explain them in greater detail. Your whole school community knows about these. We also have laws that have been recently enacted that are helpful to the administration of your school system when it's going to vacancy. It used to be in Connecticut that people who were under a cloud of investigation would resign, and if they resigned the employment and there wasn't a finding in the file at the time of their resignation, then they would move on, and there would be no trail. We now have a law in Connecticut that says before you hire, you are entitled to ask the former employer of anybody who's applying for a job as a teacher, and you have access to information about pending claims of child abuse, basically. And if it hadn't yet been determined that there wasn't abuse, but the person resigned while the investigation was in progress, then your school system gets to know that. And the school system that gives out that information is indemnified, those employees are indemnified from wrongdoing as long as they don't do anything willfully fraudulent or false in their reporting. So there's the ability now from, for school A to tell school B, no, this guy resigned under these circumstances, and you make your decision accordingly. Now, I'd like to say that that was a national law. It's not. People can still move into other states, and there isn't the same duty to report, either for us as receiver or even as an employer to report out. And, you know, some employers are more dutiful in their vetting of their job applicants than others, but with that statute in place, that helps to avoid having the dangerous employee leave and continue to operate within the state of Connecticut. So there's a lot going on.
Kind of a side question, and that's only just from, you know, some of our other roles that have to be where, what role does the union play when a teacher is, there's an allegation against a teacher, administrator, or any union employee? Like, what role does the union play?
Well, I mean, the union, I've found union representatives to be very responsible. So it's the rare person that does not want to work with us to help get rid of that person from this environment if the evidence is compelling. They have a duty as an exclusive bargaining representative to represent the employee, and virtually every contract has a penalty or a disciplinary provision in the contract that requires just cause. But by the time we get to the discussion about whether so-and-so should resign or they're going to be fired, the evidence is pretty compelling, and we don't, you know, hide this out. It's not like we're not showing our cards. We let them know. So more often than not, the unions can be a resource for us. Now, at the same time, the...
So there's no negative ramification that we have to do this? It's kind of, this is business, this is how it's done, and everyone works together in the best interest of a child?
That's exactly right. Now, the union also has the obligation to its employees. So there are cases where substantiation by a DCF investigator may not be accurate. So there's an appeal process within that process, so they will represent teachers in that process to help clear the name of someone they think is falsely or wrongly accused or investigated.
One teacher is still out on leave?
Yeah, the teacher, the teacher does not come back. If there's a finding of substantiation, that teacher never comes back.
What is the legal ramification of firing a teacher if there is no cause or if it was not founded? What is the legal ramification?
Well, everybody knows teachers have tenure.
Right.
So the Tenure Act gives them an entitlement to go to a hearing, and in most cases, in Connecticut's law today, that's a hearing before one impartial hearing panel member, or it could be before you as a board of education. So they have a right to, and that's the due process we're talking about. So they have a right to call witnesses, they have the right to present evidence, and they have the right to a determination. So most cases are done by the impartial hearing officer. That person then issues a decision based upon the findings that are made. You then take that decision and make a determination as to how severe the disciplinary consequences will be. Termination being the one extreme, and the other extreme being there was no wrong. So if that person then challenges a determination made by his employer or her employer, they have the right to go to court and try to have it overturned on appeal. So there are procedures in place, it's not easy terminating tenured employees, but even non-tenured employees without just cause, they have the right, virtually every one of your contracts, to go to either the American Arbitration Association, or the State Department of Arbitration. So there is a tribunal there to protect the rights of the employees. And that's important too, because, you know, with such a low standard, it's, it's a little bit scary for people who work in education that they could be brought into this sphere for reasons that maybe another person would disagree doesn't constitute a reasonable basis for suspicion. But erring on the side of protecting the kids is the rule, it's built into the law, it's built into your policies, and we protect the interests of the adults secondarily.
So the board's role is to, primary roles are to evaluate the superintendent, to oversee the budget, and to develop policy.
Adopting policies is critical, that's your legislative role.
Right. So what role would we have in this investigative process?
Zero.
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 Other than creating the policy.
Well, you get to do two parts of the law. You, well, actually, you get to do it, when you do the policy, you're the legislative branch.
Yeah.
When you make a decision to direct people to read the policies, put it in the school, that's your executive branch, you're running your school system. And when the hearing goes to you, then you're the judge, you sit in the judicial capacity. So you, at one point or another, you do all three governmental capacities, legislative, judicial, and executive, but you never play private eye.
So the board may not know of an allegation of abuse unless it becomes an issue with the union?
Unless it goes to a hearing-
Unless it goes to a hearing.
To the-
So the board may not be notified?
Well, it, you know, like-
I'm not saying it is or it is, I'm just trying to figure it out.
Well, in your, in your own policies, in the procedures, remember, we have a duty to protect the confidentiality and reputation of people as well, so-
Yeah.
Those, those investigations are done in a very protective way, and in a very confidential way. They're done thoroughly, and they're done by, like I said, three or four different agencies, but it doesn't involve the board at that level of investigation. Now, you may get a report from the superintendent of schools because it's out there in the community, there might be some event that occurred that's very public, and, and that's more of a heads up to alert you to something that's going on. But rest assured, your school system's on top of it, it's being taken care of, and if it's taken care of, then in the course of events, you're not gonna find it on your agenda.
Right.
It's only gonna hit the agenda when there's a request for a hearing. And in every grievance procedure, there's a board-level grievance hearing.
Yeah.
And those are public hearings.
Correct. Okay, tell us whatever else you want to tell us now.
Well, we've got a full agenda tonight, I'm happy to answer any questions, but, you know, I handed out just, or not, I didn't, but the superintendent's office handed out probably close to 50 pages in policies, and there's probably another 50 pages that we didn't bother to kill a tree for to hand out tonight. But you are very well positioned to take care of all of the legal mandates that the state and federal government requires you to take, you have been for years, your, your employees have a very heavy responsibility and a very significant one, and I'm sure they don't take it lightly. That's why every year they're trained and reminded, just as we're doing here tonight, to inform basically your public that this is the body of law that's out there. So that, rest assured, the entities that you would rely on, your educational entity, your police department, and the state of Connecticut's DCF, they serve you in this, this area very thoroughly, very competently, and the processes for filing a report are streamlined in your, your board policies, and if not, like you said, you can pick up the phone and call them.
Yeah. So venture on our policy committee, right?
Yes.
Do you mind pulling our policies and start reviewing them in policy committee?
Well, I have nothing else to do, so I can do that.
You can just hang out, you know, do nothing?
No, I was looking for Policy 2400, I know it's mentioned in here quite a few times, and I don't see it attached, I was looking-
It's online.
Yeah, it's online, I've got, I've got a copy, I may leave one with you tonight, but yeah, it's-
I do have a question for your counsel.
Yep.
I noticed that we only have one state school specialist, but we got five buildings.
You've got one in each building, and you have one district-wide state school specialist here-
Well, I only see one listed here, and that's Dr. Carter Wells, I don't see anybody else-
Right, he's, he's-
No, for the district.
He's named in there for the district-wide.
Okay.
But-
And we have one in these buildings?
Yes.
Yeah, in the State School Climate Plan 1400, it, it makes mention of the principal of each school shall designate a committee in the school responsible for developing and fostering state schools, so-
Well, should the names be listed in our board policies?
No.
Well, the policies come, you know, they're reviewed every few years-
We're taking names out of the policies, remember, and putting titles, and not-
By position, yeah.
And that, we're putting type, positions and titles, not names.
Don't, don't forget you're working with CAE now as well on, on policies, so-
But this is about abuse, like, does it give a number, or I don't, I don't see the policy, Vince, does it give a name and a number, or just a name?
No, it just gives a name and an email address. Carter Wells, let me see.
Yeah, he's in there as the director for the district, but, you know, just for example, on page 11 of 22, notice to law enforcement, if the principal reasonably believes any act constitutes criminal offense, he shall notify appropriate law enforcement. So the principal on each school is, is the person you can go to the confidence as, if you're a teacher, for example, and you want to report it. So it's like a pipeline, it's, you know, a funnel, it's wide at one end and very narrow at the other end.
And Vince, that's where we're viewing them, if we see anything that we might want to do a little bit differently, and we consult CAE, and we consult our attorney, and we wanna like beef it up a little bit, we certainly can. I mean, it's, I just haven't looked at them all to evaluate them.
No, I-
This was four years ago, we, I mean-
I could look at them, that's, that's not a problem, they're all on the internet, you said?
All of them. Yeah, all of them are on, 2400 is the only one that I think is in-
Twenty years our policies have circulated, they've gone through them, and they've reviewed them, and we kind of work our way through, and by the time we get to the end, we start all over again, and just keep circulating them. I don't think there's, there's-
Shouldn't have gotten this, which I've confirmed that overseas policy-
Correct.
Yeah, there's a difference, yeah.
Yeah, I've got a copy of 2400, if you like, need to leave it behind, 23 pages.
Yeah, that'll be fine, thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, now you have a full agenda tonight, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing me, pleasure.
Thank you very much for turning on it.
Let me have a question back there.
No, we're not, we're not taking, no, it's not a public-
No, we're not, there's no questions.
It's not a public meeting.
I saw something saying the law-
Bill, thank you.
It's not a public meeting, the meeting wasn't public.
No. Best way out, down the back.
Down right out through there.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Espru. Okay, Stanley T W roof replacement, we do not need any action on that, as you know, we discussed that at our last meeting, the potential for the main part of the building with park and rec, and also art into the building, but they're looking to get an architect in to look at and do an evaluation before they put out an RFQ, and then that would start the process. So we're probably a few weeks away from that actually getting back to you to have to make a motion to, to approve that. So we don't need to do anything with that. As I mentioned before, John Florio's here, and he's gonna speak about some of the maintenance and update of buildings and equipment that's been going on. So John, if you want to come up here.
Sorry, John, like, your first, you know-
Want information, go ahead.
Yeah, we're like, hey, you can plan together, let me slip.
Give you guys a package, so you can take it home with you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Now, I started the first page, district-wide, this is a list of all the six-month and annual inspections and certifications that have been completed up to this point. These certifications have to be done by either state law, or by health department laws, or by local fire marshal laws, or just town ordinances, according to the insurance company. So these here have all been done for our six-month and our annual inspection certifications that will take us into the fiscal, into the fiscal year. Okay? The next page is-
John, do you do all these yourself?
What's that?
You do, you don't do all these yourself, right?
Most of these are done, these have to be done by a vendor-specific-
The company's on the right, so if you look at it, it's-
They hold the liability, we can't test the fire system for certification, because if anything happens, now you're liable.
Got it.
So the right-hand column is the vendor.
Right. That's the vent, the vendors are on the right.
Vendors are on the right.
This is what they do, and on the right is the companies that do it.
So you oversee it, and you, you oversee it, the schedule?
I oversee the schedule, I oversee when they come, and what they do, and get their reports. So some reports we have to hand in to the state of Connecticut, some reports we just have to keep on file, in case anybody comes in and wants to see that we did it.
Okay. And are there other annual or six-month inspections that you and your team has to do, just to keep things regular and running?
Well, that, that falls under preventive, preventive maintenance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
These are actually certifications that have to be done.
So it's preventive maintenance somewhere else in here?
Yeah, as we go down the line.
Got it.
Okay? So now, these are, these are relationships that we're gonna keep, some of these, some of these contracts, we, some of these companies we have annual contracts with, some we just call as needed. I requested them, for them to update their annual contracts, the ones that we have, to see that we could see what, we could predict for the 21, 22, and I didn't receive any of them before this meeting. So as soon as I start getting them in, turn those over to Martha, if she can get them to you guys, you can see that most of these companies held their contract price from the previous year, this year, just about all of them did, there was not a large increase in contracted, there's only a few of these who are contracted, the rest of them are called as needed.
Okay. Do you think it would be beneficial to us to contract any more of them based on our finances? Like, are we overspending, calling people in, would it be more beneficial to evaluate and see if the contract is better?
The best, the best thing to do is, we, we do compare, I do compare these to other vendors, to see if we're getting a good price. These people have been giving us really good service and really good prices. What's nice about these people, they know the buildings, they've been here for a long time, so they don't have to hold their hands when they come here, they know their job, they know the building, they get the job done, they give us the reports.
Now, something breaks in an emergency, like, if you're not on contract, you're not like, they're not rushing to oversee, but if you are on contract, they do.
I'm-
So how does that, like, at least for a private home, how does that work for a school?
Anytime there's an emergency, I'm, I'm the emergency person.
You're like the panic-
I'm 24, I'm 24/7. So no matter what happens in the schools, I'm there, okay? The 3 o'clock burglar alarm goes off, I'm there.
Right.
The 2 o'clock murder fire alarm goes off, I'm there, I'm there at the fire department anyway, but I'm there. All these people give me the calls, or I get them on my phone.
Okay.
Okay, so if we have a fire alarm, or we have a boiler go down, we have something happen where it's an emergency, I'm there. Most, most things in our schools, I take care of. We very seldom call anybody in to do anything, very seldom. We, we, we do it all in-house, okay? The only thing we call these people in for is large-scale projects, or projects that have to be done by a vendor-specific dealer.
Okay.
Okay?
And John, do you plan to go through all these pages?
Would, John, we could talk real-
I think that's a cue-
That would be very helpful.
You're, you're on a very tight schedule.
We could know real fast, you could, you could take this back and hope, and I'd be hoping to-
Like, you asked for it, you got it.
Whatever you want to do, because a lot of stuff in the back is pictures of what you're, what have you faced with repairing.
Yeah, that's how, I want the down and dirty, like, this overwhelms me, what I'm met with is like a spreadsheet. I want to know-
So, why don't you-
Every, hey, I want to know what's done every six months by you, by a vendor, what needs to be done annually by you and the vendor, I want to know what's on the three-year plan, what's on the five-year plan, what are, what's gonna come up in 10 years, like, for me, are we gonna need a roof, are we gonna need the sidewalk, so we can plant-
Without a doubt.
It's so easy for me to see it in a spreadsheet, this, I'm sorry, I probably have some ADD, I don't know what, I really can't comprehend it all.
So why don't, why don't we do this?
I'm feeling a little anxious.
Take, take this with you, it's user-friendly.
Okay, 'cause this, this tells you what happened in the schools this past, okay?
Yeah.
And also, it's always gonna tell you what you're looking, what things are coming up.
Yeah. All right.
Okay? There's, you're, you're looking at some serious asphalt repair, real serious asphalt repairs, which went very costly.
It's something we would talk about for CAE.
John, this is, this doesn't include the issues with the intermediate school, we talked about during the night?
This, no, what, what, yeah, it, it, I did cover that, it is something, okay? What we, this is, this is just some proposed future, okay? So you have asphalt repair. We wanted to demolish the portables of Totaka Valley because they're a safety issue.
I'm sorry, what did you want to demolish? I didn't hear you.
The portables.
The portables of Totaka Valley.
Portables, okay.
You're gonna overuse, right?
They render you-
Twenty, 20 years ago, they ran their life.
The cooling tower, the cooling tower at Jerome Harrison has already been approved by the town council and kicked back to the board of ed, said do the job. There's, that's what a building, if you'd like to build, to build to get rid of storage trailers we're paying monthly fees for, should be paying monthly fees when you build a building.
And that would be for one high school project?
The high school.
High school.
Dude, the roof at Stanley T Williams has, there's a bid in here?
Yeah.
The, the town already got one bid ready for putting a roof on his building, okay? As far as I heard from the town, they're, they're doing it? They didn't say anything about board of ed doing it, said the town was doing it, so we'll see what happens there.
Well, it'll be in cooperation.
It'll be a joint project?
We, we share the buildings, so-
And then they, the-
Is that built into a budget? I'm sorry, is that built into our budget, their budget, next year's budget?
They're, they're handling it on the reimbursement end of the state.
They got a very, they got a very, very good price-
Right.
-so far, a really good price to do the roof on his building, so maybe-
Exactly.
So, so, to answer Jeff's question, at the building committee meeting the other night, the masonry repair that was supposed to start this summer on the intermediate school because of the leaks, okay? The building committee had a lot of questions for the architect, and basically what came out of that was, the architect, and everybody in the building committee agrees, that sealing the brick on the intermediate school is just part of Band-Aid, the problem is the roof design. So you're gonna spend money sealing the brick, four or five years later down the road, you're still gonna have the staining and the leaking into the building, so you're gonna waste half-spirit's money. They went back to the architect, told the architect to come back to the committee next month.
The intermediate school architect?
Rusty-
Intermediate school.
Rusty Malick.
Oh, they went to Rusty-
He's doing it.
Okay?
Rusty.
So now, it's the same architect doing both projects.
QA and M.
QA and M.
So, no, 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 Rusty wasn't the original architect for the intermediate-
No, Rusty, Rusty's been, Rusty was hired to do the masonry project.
Okay, okay, that's what I was-
So what happened was, they went back, now Rusty's gonna do a roof design, so the town is gonna look into, the building committee told the town, we're gonna present you with a new roof design and a cost. You have a 10-year-old building that's gonna be putting a roof on this, this design draw.
So, but I think what's important, when you look at what's happening, the water's weeping behind the bricks, it's coming through, it saturates it, and then it turns to mold on the outside. So at the high school, the building's never been sprayed in 60-plus years, and there's And there's not a stain on that building because the water cascades off.
The roof is designed correctly.
They're gonna redirect, they're gonna redo the lip on the edge and how water runs and flows so it does not come down the side of the building or behind.
Jeff was at the meeting, he saw all the pictures, and it's.
So it makes more sense specifically in the long run to redo the roof than it does to.
To.
Then they would do the masonry repointing.
Right, after the roof is done.
After the roof is done.
And then it should be done, and it should last.
Actually, we're perpetuating an issue in the future for going to do one project and then another. We've done this for a couple of years now. Going through this, the professionalism that Rusty and his firm has put together, and how they've looked at the high school project, now looking at this project, it's clear that there was an issue with the roofing on the intermediate school. And that does need to be addressed. So we're still, you know, within a point where Rusty's gonna come back to us with, you know, what's going to be the best means of action, what's the most efficient means of action to mitigate this issue. So we're still not there yet. But we do know that just sealing the brick is, as you said, a Band-Aid on it when you just let it heal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rusty will be able to retire when he's done with North River.
When you talk to Justin.
They're working very hard.
Yeah, he's working, I'll tell you.
Okay, that makes sense to them, John, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, the right thing, you have a building that you want to stand it for 50 years. If it's 10 years old, you're gonna have to put a roof on it. But if you don't fix the roof, you're just gonna be repairing the building the whole life.
Right.
So.
The life of the building.
Yeah, the life of the building. So the town council probably isn't gonna like to hear the cost. But it's the only way to fix the problem. It's the only way to fix the problem. Okay, and as far as your asphalt, we would put that out to state, to state bid, probably till, you know, till companies will go after it. But all we wanted to do was see, so we had just a local paving company that the town deals with. We walked the site with Framero, basically, this is bad, this is bad. The whole Jerome Harrison site is bad. Jerome Harrison's gonna be 23 years old now, that's the original asphalt. So the hole at Jerome Harrison needs, but how the contractor did it, he broke it up into sections, so you'll see. So if you decide to do a two- or three- or four- or five-year paving plan, you could do sections rather than the whole thing. But you would have to really be diligent, because it's starting to break up bad. So all you really need to do is have one person trip a fall on it.
I know, that's the thing.
Okay, and it's on you. So, you know, it's, they're getting to the point. Now, the front of the intermediate school in the auditorium is also broken up. But I was told by the engineers for the new high school project that that's gonna be repaved with the new high school.
Perfect.
So that's gonna save you guys.
Perfect, yeah.
That's gonna save you guys. You're rolled and reimbursed. They're gonna do it with the high school project.
John, in terms of that, at this point, what project can you do first? So obviously, there's, I mean, some asphalt that's in worse condition than others.
Your asphalt is the most important.
Do we know where, you said Jerome?
Yeah, Jerome Harrison and Totucket Valley. Totucket Valley, if you're looking at Totucket, the left-hand side, the gymnasium side, that's broken up the worst. Then there's a front section right against the curb line, the curb line is where the firehouse is. There's a whole section broken up there. The main parking area for the teachers, it's bad, but it's not as bad as the rest. But, you know, according to Framero, like you said, once you move machines in, and you start reclaiming, you're kinda stupid to leave one patch. Do you mind if we just do the whole thing?
Yeah.
And Jerome Harrison, the whole system has to be done. Everything has to be done. We lucked out this year as far as, we had a great heating season this year. We had, we didn't have any major malfunction, no, no, some pumps went down, a couple of things. We ordered brand-new burners for Totucket Valley School because they're, can't get parts to repair them anymore, basically, okay? So one is on order, well, probably have it next week. There's another one that'll be coming, that'll all be installed before heating season. Repairs will be made to heating, you know, to heating. The next big thing will be to get the rest of the unit ventilators in at Totucket Valley. Six of the 16 were installed last summer. But the thing with Totucket Valley is how the heating system was installed, because you remember that, that school was built as an all-electric school?
Yeah.
The heating system was put in afterwards. So what happens is the piping comes in, it goes through every classroom, and then comes back.
Right.
So you have to change those in a section, you can't just take one at a time. That whole bank has to be changed.
Yeah.
So we're doing that building in sections. Then we're gonna have to run the electrical in sections so we can get the condensers going for the air conditioning. But luckily, every room has an air conditioner right now, so as we go along, we can get the units charged, and we won't have to worry about the window air conditioners anymore.
Were we gonna take the boilers or something from the high school and move them to Totucket Valley, or no?
When they dismantled the new high school, the old high school, the two new condensing boilers, gas-fired condensing boilers, there's no use throwing those away, they're beautiful, they're brand-new boilers.
Yeah, they're sound.
We're gonna put them in storage, because if I could ever convince the town, and a few years ago, we had them on the edge, to bring gas to the center of the town, we'll put those into Totucket Valley.
Okay.
You know, we had such a sweet deal for the town a few years ago.
I remember that.
And they didn't bite on it.
I remember that.
They only had to put in $150,000, they would've brought gas to the center of town if they sent them. So if we can get them to bring gas to the center of town, we get this building off of oil, we get that building off of oil, and we can use those boilers, we're gonna keep those boilers.
And John, this is like a good discussion, and this is what I want to keep having, so that we all know and we can prepare, like, as you're evaluating each school, so we're always ahead of it as opposed to reacting.
Yep.
That we see what's coming ahead of us, so that we properly plan, things are installed, our kids aren't like cold, hot, our parents' tires aren't getting flat, I'm like, yucky.
Well, yes, remember, North River High School was always the biggest complaint for everybody. Let's face it, built in 64.
But when that gets up to complain about there, they're gonna move to another school to complain about.
Yeah, built in 64, the heating systems are great, the windows are not great, you had hot and cold, you know? That building, we would have invested a lot of money to make that building comfortable. So the building didn't beat its life.
We raise the bar, I expect our community to raise the bar for us.
Exactly.
And that's how we get better, we keep achieving and we keep meeting goals.
Exactly. I mean.
Stay on top of that and keep.
The other schools, I think, I mean, last, last year, the principal's, I think we tried to address problems as quickly as possible and keep everything going. I think the other schools run along pretty good. Remember, the other schools have energy management systems too, the high school does not. So, you know, as we improve, those buildings are getting energy managed, they have new energy management systems. So they control the environment better. The rooftop on the intermediate school, you know, has always been a problem, that equipment, there's a lot of equipment up there, a lot of balancing, a lot of work to keep that building comfortable. But this year, I think we did a pretty good job, right? We really didn't have a lot of complaints there. Totucket Valley is good, Jerome Harrison is good. We do have to replace the chiller, the cooling tower on Jerome Harrison, or anyone ever up in there's name. Okay, so we have to. I got one bid so far, I'm waiting for some more for that job. The only other thing we had hanging that we were pressed on was, the state of Connecticut wanted the 8,000-gallon oil tank at the high school.
Yes, removed.
Done. So what we did was, we had the oil tested. The oil tested fine, we took 70, 800 gallons out of that tank, we pumped it into Totucket Valley, and we burnt it this winter. So we didn't have to buy oil, and we had the tank cleaned, sealed, and we sent the paperwork up to the state, and the tank's gonna be removed with the demolition. And that's off of our case right now.
Perfect.
The state of Connecticut is not after us for that tank anymore.
Good.
Perfect, thank you so much for that.
Okay, if anybody has any questions, I'll look in the packet, give me a call, whatever.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, John. Thank you, John.
You look at the pictures. That's why you put pictures in. John, thank you.
Thank you.
You're free to go. It's like a student rep, if you want to stay, you can, if not, John.
If you have more work to do, you're free to go.
Because, John, you know it's gonna turn to snow later, so. I'll be talking to you at 4 o'clock.
Framero, already told, because only at 4, buddy.
Bye, John, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hey, Mark, we're not supposed to say the S-word, right?
It's not gonna happen, please.
It's the ice word that scares you. Okay, Martha's gonna financial report.
Yeah, so you each have a packet in front of you. I'll be brief. Update on the financial system, the new one. So as you know, we agreed on Munis. The discussion now is centered on whether or not the town and the board will share a database or have a separate database. In your packet, I included a letter that I wrote to the town council members illustrating out details on the cons of having a shared database. Contrary to what everybody's saying, my concern is not snooping. It is more in the differences of the processes and the details that the board is required to report on and keep, and just simply getting the work done. If we were to share a database, we would not be able to access the same vendors at the same time. We wouldn't be able to cut payroll or accounts payable checks at the same time.
So you wouldn't be able to work in the system at the same time?
So say they had a dependable heating, it's my understanding that we would not be able to pull up that vendor. If they were working in cutting accounts payable checks, we would not be able to process accounts payable checks.
Why?
Because it would be literally the same system.
So how does more than one person work in a system? Because you assume that, you know, there's not only one person in a larger company doing payroll, there's four or five. So like, how could it shut down?
But think about it, those four or five people aren't processing payroll at different times, they work together as a team and process payroll once.
So you're saying after payroll is processed, you can't go back in and process payroll again?
I'm saying that if we were cutting checks on a Tuesday afternoon, they couldn't cut checks at that same exact time on Tuesday afternoon because we would be running payroll.
Would there be issues if, let's say, somebody is employed by the town and the board, would that be an issue?
Yes, because there would be one ability for that person to be set up as an employee for both the town. They would have to share both the town and the board.
So you couldn't have a clean divide?
You couldn't, you couldn't have two employee numbers for the same employee.
And not with the element of overtime anyway.
So what we're doing is, we're gathering more information for municipalities that have this shared capability, their struggles, their challenges, pros and cons. Because when we go on the 30th for budget, we're gonna meet a half hour before and have a meeting with the council. That was the recommendation, which I wholeheartedly support. So you remember, we had a group that looked at the feasibility of bringing Town Hall and the Board of Ed together under one roof. That number came to fruition, but there was a series of steps that we agreed upon that us sharing this data warehousing system would be a good idea, what would it look like? Now we just need to find, detail some of the things that are these cons to what we would need to do. Remember, we are the lion's share of the employees with 350 employees versus the town side, which is much smaller. So it really has to work for us, it has to fit our needs.
So you're saying it's the same thought there, it's just two different databases?
Right, so they would have their own setup and implementation, and if it was separate, we would have our own setup and implementation.
And you could still talk for shared services, right?
Yes, because we would provide the town with a username and access to our system.
Yeah.
And they could go in and look or do whatever they wanted, and we could send them imports of expenditures and things that we would need between the two of us to balance on a monthly basis or for funding accounts payable or payroll checks.
Now, down the road, would this become a problem? Would there be, if it was a shared database, would this become a problem three, four, five years down the road? If you shared, like, would you run out of, like, is it kinda penny-wise and dollar-foolish to have one database and not two?
I think so, because remember, there are different modules that the town is gonna use, that the board isn't gonna use. And I'm not sure if there would be additional costs to have more users. You know, we won't need the tax assessment module, but they will. There are special modules for school districts only, like, we could do student activity reporting. They wouldn't need that, but it would be to our advantage to have it. So there's definitely pros and cons, and my letter goes into more detail about specifics. And, you know, we have teachers' retirement, which we set up very specific deductions for. I'm sure the police and fire departments have their own. So we would want to create our own deductions and not create generic things.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So, again, you can read through the letter. I am going, I have reached out again to the different districts for pros and cons, and I'm gonna compile a very shortened version, bulleted, for our meeting on March 30th at 6:30 with the town council.
The number that was floated on Tuesday evening was $120,000 difference over five years. So if you look at absorbing $25,000 a year over five years in a $32 million budget, if it works for our accounting team, and we can kinda collectively come to an agreement as part of that, it's not a question of if Munis works, it's a question of separating the two. And I think everyone needs to just get up to speed on the differences and why it works and maybe not so much for.
I mean, we use, for purchasing, we use a requisition approval path process. I don't know if the town uses that. I want to continue using that because that's the best accounting practice. If they don't want to use it, then how do we decide? Do we continue with the requisition process, or will they conform, you know, to our process? So those are the different, and that goes for everything that we do.
And we just got all the initiatives trained on the requisition process. If we change that, I don't know what they're gonna do. They're not laughing under their backs.
So that's the summary version of that. Your financial report is also in your packet, it should be located right behind the letter. The one, the big thing I do want to point out is, I've actually set aside $250,000 for food service operations if needed, because we're not collecting daily sales from lunches. I have a feeling that we're gonna need to support the food service program, so I did encumber that.
We are gonna get reimbursed for every lunch that goes out, so I don't want you to think that there's no food being served. It's free for every student, every day, in every building, and we keep account, and we do get reimbursed for it. So we'll know as we get towards the end of the year where we're at.
Okay. I've also highlighted some other things, I don't know if you want me to go through those, or if you want to read them on your own. Okay? But the most important thing is that the outlook for the end of the fiscal year remains positive.
Yeah, and that, I mean, just like in your overview, she had them dropped out.
Okay. And then there are two other handouts in your packet that I'll highlight at a different time later on in the agenda.
Okay, any questions for Martha? Okay, pending request, I already updated you that the March 30th meeting will start at 6:30 prior to our budget presentation, so that's the latest update. So we'll work with them in collaboration for looking at this software package. We continue to have our Thursday morning Zoom meetings around COVID, so I'll kinda tie these two in with the town manager's request. So we meet every Thursday with East Shore Health and all of the town agencies, police, fire, emergency medical. And we usually meet for about an hour, and it's a standing meeting. So there's really nothing new with the schools' perspective as to where we're at and what we're doing and how things are going. We're seeing some upticks with our younger age students around the Jerome age. And, you know, through our tracing, we have a really good ability to go back and see if a sibling, or if a parent, or if it was a sporting event. So that has not changed, we're adhering to our six-feet mask. We're, about 90% of our staff will be fully vaccinated by the 31st of March, 14 days later, the 15th. Those 90% of our employees will not need to quarantine if they are exposed to a positive case. So we're really in good shape. When you look at a number of districts trying to get back in to school out of a, either virtual or hybrid, and some of the obstacles, we're not there. We're finishing up our vaccinations, we're going into our spring break, the warming season, with a lot of optimism and positive thoughts towards a great closing.
So Scott, the clinics were, the COVID vaccine clinics, crazy, they were run so well. So, so well, like clockwork. I'm curious to know, now that our teachers will be fully vaccinated shortly, is there any talk of possibly, when their age group comes, of bringing a clinic in so our students can get vaccinated?
So I've talked to East Shore Health, and I'll continue to talk with East Shore, with their point people. And that's something that we'll, you know, look at in the coming months when the governor does open up for the 16 and above.
April 5th.
Yeah, well, it's coming, but we'll, you know, something else is coming tomorrow too, so we'll wait and see. And then, and we'll kinda plan accordingly. And if we're able to do it, and it's very organized like the other one was, I would love to do it in-house with our people, with our staff, in their comfort level. And we'll go through, you know, the process and with Bill Condon on what it would look like and how we could do it so that there's no issues with, you know, 16-year-olds, you know, without having a parent there. So we'll work all of that out. So we'll work out the legal piece, but I would love to, if we can do it, and we can help our community out with our kids, we'd love to do it.
It would just be nice, the more people vaccinated, the better.
Oh, absolutely.
Has there been anybody refusing to be vaccinated?
I wouldn't say they're refusing, they're just saying, I'm not interested at this time. And we say, that's great, that's your choice, and no one is being influenced or strong-armed, that's their decision, and I respect it. So we started off with about a 60 percentile interest rate, which went well over 80%, and then I think increased to about 90%. Because after, you know, the 75 and above, and then the 65s, and people saw that, yeah, there was, you know, a lot of 12 to 24-hour reaction period, and then people were fine, and that it was really effective and going in the right direction. Now with the Johnson &amp; Johnson coming out, it's one shot, one deal, our numbers have been really high. So we're in a good place, and, you know, kudos to Park &amp; Rec, who had been running these prior to us getting on, and then you mentioned. been running these prior to us getting on. And then, you mentioned Vama, Vama White. That's a joke.
Vanna White?
Vama, for the VAM system. So, Tracy's Vama White, that's my nickname for her. But, just, you know, working her way through that piece of it to get everyone, you know, up to speed with the letters and the updates and all of that, it's just been, it's been great. And everyone that was a part of it, from when you walked in the door to when you left, it was great teamwork. So, it's something that North Branford should be really proud of. And our volunteers were wonderful. I don't wanna name anyone, Mary. But, it's just been a great community team event. So, that's that for COVID.
I think we skipped by.
I was just gonna go back up to maintenance, but I might as well finish, I'm on a roll. So, the North Branford High School building project, I'll catch you in there, don't you worry, you got your mark. The building project, I wanna thank Jeff and Beth, who are now officially on the permanent project building meeting, and I'll turn it over to you. But, I just want everyone to know, if, you know, you haven't been around a major building project, the amount of time and energy, and time and energy, it's time and energy.
It's the new guy initiation. Come on, let's be honest.
Jeff, with that being said, I've zoomed in on a couple of your meetings and...
Sure, absolutely. So, Mondays are monopolized, as you well know, until at least 11 o'clock. There's a lot of exciting things going on in this project. I mean, this is probably something this town has never seen before, that we're gonna undertake projects and bring up a world-class high school to this town. The architects that we chose has done an unbelievable job, continues to show why we chose them, and candidly, not to, you know, bring shade to pass, but why they're world-class versus what maybe we have looked at in the past. And we've carried that across with our building, the firm that we chose to be our contract manager, the builder. And Bill Baines has shown great class and understanding with their technology, to what they're bringing to the table. You know, it's a thorough process where we're getting information all the way through and reporting us to each stage, and all the little nitty-grays of each stage and what's gonna happen. And in 30 months from the point of breaking ground, hopefully, hopefully 30, oh, give me a, you know, 32 if we had to go, probably 30 months, we're gonna have a new high school when we come here. So, I think that's a wonderful thing. It's great for the folks that, you know, the younger school system, they're excited to have this, you know, in the future. My daughter as well, who will be in the school system in a few years, I'm excited for that. Everything we're doing now is we're in the process of putting together some, you know, rules around what we're gonna build for what's called a clerk of the works, gonna be kind of a ancillary on the side of the board and on the side of North Branford, to work with the construction manager, Gil Bane, and all the other types of people in there, to be our eyes and ears and feet on the street for a second. So, that's something that's in the works. John, who was here earlier, is part of that process, and I think that will present to the council relatively soon. There's some talk that they may utilize some other projects in town here with that particular position, but that's, again, that's still the thing that, you know, we're also doing, the police station, as well as the project nightmare slash project, and the intermediate school. So, yeah, that's, you know, that's really the thick and skinny, what's going on right now within this program. And if there's, you know, any questions, please feel free to reach out to me, and I can certainly fill in it. That's what we're talking about.
I actually have a question. Oh, do you wanna curse? So, obviously, the newspaper, we had in the Tuckett Times, all the photos and pictures, but that...
I drew those.
Yes, very, very good. So, I just had a couple of phone calls. People were so excited and how beautiful they were.
But there's a lot of, that's not like the app. I didn't want people to say, "No, there's..."
No, that's what I was getting. That's what I was getting at. So, they wanted to know, like, is this what it's going to be? And I said, "It's still in the works, and I wanna make sure I'm telling people the proper information that it's not, the interior's not set, right?"
Yeah, those are concept designs. Rusty, our architect from Q&amp;M, indicated that there's been some updates from these pictures. A lot of these things were done as they were bidding the project, and we've carried some of these photos or these, you know, illustrations forward. So, no, it's not the final design. I think the final design will be a little bit more vibrant, but it's getting definitely the understanding of the flow of things.
Yeah, a feel.
Along with those lines.
Where the design will be, where the media center will be.
Is there gonna be any other public, the person who had called me was, they're actually a media specialist, and they were looking at pictures of the library, and they kind of wanted to hear about or maybe give opinions, because they've been in the field. Is there, like, any other meetings?
No. So, it's the same lady that I spoke to, and I say that tongue-in-cheek, but she was a retired librarian.
Maybe it was, yeah, so.
And we had a wonderful conversation.
Okay. I just wanted, yeah.
A lot of this, we've already met multiple times with our staff, and they're having conversations, you know, with the architect and with what's going to be specifically in their classrooms and with the library. So, we're, that train is already well on the track.
Okay. Well, she's what I relayed, but I just wanna just get it out there, because I don't have all the information, so.
And I'll give a specific example to what we're talking about here. So, first, when they were meeting with the teachers, they're going through kind of the needs and, you know, when you're building up this concept of what you're going to be building in, you don't maybe take into account for certain areas. So, the science labs, one of the bigger areas of concern was storage. So, they've actually made changes to the, to the architectural aspect of it, of building in more storage. So, they're taking into account a lot of these little, you know, details, make sure that it's done right, and it's just not...
They have arms and things.
Yeah, they have arms and arteries in.
Yeah, we're like frogs.
We had a presentation from the science.
You know, we talked before about an exterior building for holding our snow blowers and our lawn mowers, and things where we wanna keep gas one engines out of the building, porcupine. So, little detailed things that we've looked at the main office of the high school, we've redesigned where we're gonna...
We met today with our educators and Rusty and Carson on the art rooms. Natalie and Miss Farideh and Rusty and Carson on the science rooms they refer to. So, we have another one tomorrow. So, usually, two or three times a week, we meet with the architects about interior pieces and also exterior pieces.
A little exciting part of the exterior, just maybe think about it with the science part of this. So, we're utilizing some of the area that has been quite a problem in North Branford, which is the weapons.
Right, it's teaching space.
A learning facility, and an area where they're gonna put in paths.
Outdoor classrooms.
Outdoor classroom, which is amazing. You know, we're gonna take a space that was once, I don't wanna say a housework, but not utilized and not utilized properly. We're gonna make it into a learning experience. It's some great stuff. They've changed the flow of the bus path, kind of making it more campus feel. So, very exciting things they're going forward, and more will be shared with the town.
Right, as we get more detail into that. So, but I did speak about the library.
Okay.
Media center.
Thank you.
Yes, media center.
I mean, it's really exciting to know that we're not just building a building, we're transforming education. And that's, there's a different approach than I thought, and I really like that.
Every student, and every teacher will be involved in the conversation of, you know, what your needs are, and what are some of the things that are, you know, critical for your teaching space.
There's so much that goes into it behind the scenes, that I don't even know if people know. I mean, you know, I know my daughter's the school nurse, and she went to a few different schools that recently built schools, and spoke, you know, to the nurses and said, "What was, you know, your favorite things? What were the things you would do again? What, if you had to do it over, what, you know, what would you change, and what don't you need?" I mean, there's, and I'm sure a lot of the different department heads and, you know, everybody is doing that, taking advantage of other people's...
If that has been done, they've been talking to Gil Verden, Clinton.
Yeah, we do site visits.
Those are projects that were recently done, and there are some areas where maybe they would have liked to seem something different.
Yeah, if you've done it on site.
Not in mistakes, but mistakes, right? Areas that they might wanna improve, and that's all being addressed. This is being done right.
Awesome.
So, and we'll continue. Every board meeting, we'll update, because they'll have had another three or four project meetings prior to.
Yeah, I guess they will.
And, yeah, we will.
And we're still on schedule.
Still on schedule.
Right now, it's on schedule. We're gonna be breaking ground June.
We get out on the 14th, so on 50.
Okay, so, yeah. Scott's gonna get it.
I already got the key to the wrecking ball. Like, 13 classrooms go, and we'll displace and move 13 teachers, and we'll start that process in the spring. And when the kids come back next year, half of that dynamo will be gone.
Yep.
So, it's exciting.
So excited. Did you wanna, I know there was some talk, maybe about possibly letting former alumni tour it.
Yeah. So, we have a couple of requests, and we're gonna try to get, before the wrecking ball goes into the building, where there's some time capsules, and we're gonna strategically work with Rusty and our construction management team to go and try to retrieve those artifacts from the building. But then, what we're also gonna do is we're gonna work with Tuckett TV in our video class, and we wanna do a video documentary of the entire process. So, we're gonna, we're gonna get from the old school, everything through to the demolition, the rebuild, and have it really be a learning project for the next two years.
That'd be really cool.
And we'll use a drone, and we'll have the ability to use our tech kids with Tuckett TV. It should be really educational and exciting for the kids.
And Gil Bane will be doing some outdoor classes as well, where they're gonna bring in kids that wanna learn about, you know, various classes. May it be, you know, science is math, and go through each day with some of the construction managers and superintendents, various things that are going on. So, it's gonna be all the way through a learning, you know, project as well.
Sure. Now, Martha, do you wanna go back?
Martha, sure.
Whatever you want to say.
I'm the one who was asking for this stuff, too.
I didn't realize it was right behind the other part of my report, so I apologize. So, John and I looked at a software that would help to make the preventative maintenance and the scheduled maintenance electronic. So, instead of handing out that packet, we would be able to incorporate work orders that would collect all the data. It would be customizable to building room, floor, priority level. John, as the administrator, would have access to see if those work orders were being completed. He could reassign them. When they're completed, they, all of the data would flow into a preventative maintenance-type schedule, and we would be able to do some data analysis. So, how many work orders are being completed in the month, how much time and costs are associated with each piece of equipment or maintenance, what parts are needed for those repairs, and then we would be able to schedule out monthly, quarterly, semi, annual, et cetera.
Is this part of the software you're looking at, or is this something?
No. So, this is a software called, it's specifically for facilities and maintenance.
Okay.
And it used to be called School Dude, but it is now just Dude Software.
Yeah, we've used it for years.
It's specifically for facilities.
How much is it?
They haven't gotten back to me on yet, on that, yet.
We've had it in the district. It just has to be used.
Yeah, we've paid for it.
We have. You just have to use it.
But it hasn't been utilized to its potential.
Can we have it?
It is, what we have now is a legacy software, which is no longer supported.
Oh, okay, so we need the upgrade.
So, we would be getting an upgrade. One of the other nice features of the new software is that it has a mobile app, so the custodian or the maintenance person performing, performing the repair, could take pictures, log notes, and complete it. And the principals of the buildings would also be able to see if the work order is being worked on currently or not. It has a QR code generator, so those are those little barcode things that we would be able to stick on all pieces of equipment and machinery. And with your cell phone, you could, you could scan that, and it would basically give you the full repair record.
Look at where the brand was coming into 20.
And have all data associated with that, with that piece of equipment.
That would be great.
We have to get them all smart phones.
I'm sorry.
Inventory as well, do you know what?
Yes, we do inventory.
They don't work with flip phones.
Will this system also house prior bids, and we can put a PDF of the bid into the system, so that we know who we talked to, when we had got a profit card?
I think they can build templates, and there is a scanning feature, so we probably would be able to store that information electronically somewhere in the program. So, the next piece is waiting for the sales rep to get back to me with a cost, but John and I are really excited about the potential of this and what it could mean for, you know, just looking at the data and how much do these things cost. So, we would be able to answer your questions, you know, once this thing got up and running. So, we're excited about it.
That's awesome. Okay. Committee reports, negotiations?
Nothing right now.
Nothing right now.
No, we're gonna get ready to go into our next phase with our custodians, and then we'll start the paraprofessionals. So, we'll get timelines and things. We're gonna do, I think, a bump and run next Thursday, I think it is. It's a very quick meeting, and we'll go through the ground rules and then start that whole process. And I'll get you some dates with the custodians as well. We're moving towards that date coming up as well.
Budget and operations, Martha did. Curriculum.
Well, I actually have our two presenters still in the room with us, Amy Farady and Mrs. Carol Warren, who are science curriculum coordinators. So, I would love them to give a brief synopsis of what they went over, and then perhaps the board members that were present can just kind of give us their reactions.
So, tonight, we talked science curriculum, P12. We started at Jerome, and I highlighted the really effective program that we put in this year. We took science out of this classroom, and we actually made a science special, so the kids will get 45 minutes of science instruction every single week. Teachers, classroom teachers, will have more time to focus on reading, writing, math, hopefully. I got to observe a lesson last week. The competitors, their challenge was to make sure that a boulder didn't crash into the houses of Tiny Town. And so, they've been working on courses and making sure that the boulder was pushed in a different direction. I am thrilled with the program at Jerome. Mrs. Bane is doing a fantastic job. And then, we talked about teams, and I have my partner here, Carol, in there.
Yes, so I put public values with the same program, and with the older grades, we are using more technologies. So, we're integrating more technologies in their everyday science. Our schedule's a little bit different. We try to do science toward five days a week for at least seven hours each time that we do it. And then, we flip-flop, and we do an entire science unit, and then we flip-flop with the social studies unit. So, both of those are getting their time within the classroom. And with the integration of technology, we've been doing a lot of interactive notebooks, using Google Classroom, Jam boards, and other things that we have available through our Google Suite that we use, and then...
And then, we moved up to middle school. We have a brand-new curriculum this year called Amplify Curriculum. It's a hands-on, interactive, digital curriculum. The kids, the one of the reasons why we love this one, it was the first curriculum that was actually written after Next Generation Science Standards were adopted by the state of Connecticut. And so, it's not a curriculum that they kind of tried to tweak to fit the standards. It's fully aligned to Next Gen. And we also love the simulations that are provided through the program. We actually watched one tonight where the red animals were eating the green animals, and then at one point, the red animals came together, and then there was, like, a third red animal that just magically appeared. So, the kids are all learning about different factors that will...
Both of them are fun.
Different factors that'll affect different populations and genetics. And then, finally, in our high school, we have a homegrown curriculum. We have a plethora of classes that they can take. All of our core classes are aligned to Next Generation Science Standards. And today, I actually was really excited to unpack some of our new materials for our new curriculum, our new unit, sorry, our new class that we got for next year, Project Lead the Way: Principles of Biomedical Science, where the kids start out as scientific scientists, and they have a dead body, and they have to figure out how old the dead body is based on the insects that they find in the body. I brought in an arm tonight. I assumed to learn to take blood from the arm, and I also brought in what I like to call a bloody stump, because the kids actually have to learn how to use a tourniquet and to stop the flow of blood. So, it's a very exciting course.
I think that's your goal, education team building up.
Yeah.
I'll be the dead body.
I'll suck you in the retreat.
And so, I'm always wishing for more STEM courses. I think STEM is the future, especially with our girls. All of our science teachers, a lot of them are females. We're always trying to encourage females to go into STEM. Yeah, we're trying. We're trying really hard. We had a lot of students sign up for our new Principles of Biomedical Science course. We actually had to make a cut in our software, so they'll have to wait till their junior year to take it. But, yeah, it's really popular. We're really excited to be able to offer all of our courses.
Wow.
That's great.
So Edith said, I would love to hear the.
They brought in some of the activities that we do in the class and it was a blast. I flunked my bird eating exercise, like very poorly, but besides that, it was a lot of fun. I could see the kids really enjoying it.
Totally nailed the bubble thing.
Yeah, totally nailed that.
Like there was foam and.
Chemical reaction.
Yes.
It was beautiful, it was beautiful.
So, and to speak for, to speak for my son, who is a kindergartner, he loves science with Mrs. Bannon and he loves it. I had to take him in the fall for a flu shot and it was on Friday. It was in the middle of the day. I said, you know what, I'll just stay home. He's like, no, I can't, I have to go back to school because I'm the science. So I literally had to like bring him out and back in so he could not miss science. So it is really enjoyed, so.
And I just want to thank the ladies for coming. There has been a dramatic change in the last few years about what science means to students and they deserve a big part of bringing that to North Branford.
Thank you.
Thank you, really, thank you.
Ladies, you can leave as well if you like. Or you can stay. You made it this far.
Yeah, it should be almost over, right?
Free of pressure.
All right, so there's no pension, there's no policy, but next month we will have policy. ACIS?
I'm sorry, I missed though this meeting.
Okay, so nothing from ACIS. Buildings have already covered, no communications, no wellness, new business. No new business. Okay, good of the board. I just want to mention that I was able to go over and see reach, read across America. There was no reading for me this year, but I was still able to see what a wonderful job they did in the school. It's my favorite thing to see or one of my favorite things to see each year. The kids were having a great time. They were all dressed up as their favorite book character. The teachers were all dressed up, they looked great.
Who?
It was really such a really good, positive environment. It's such a nice ad that we do every year, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, my friend.
We also did, we did what at TBS and it was a virtual, Dr. Walsh?
It was. That's correct. Not like a day without a read aloud.
That's right.
On the kids.
Not keep the day off.
Yourself out there. Yeah, you started the day wrong.
I started the day with, what was my name on my book? I can't remember now.
It was about building a new school.
Yes, that's right. It was the building of the new school. Thank you. Thank you, but it was great and the kids had a wall and they were really.
Dream team was a big help with us, the high school kids and that, so it was really.
Oh, they're still doing that during COVID, that's great. Oh, you said it was virtual?
Yeah, so they stayed in their classrooms, we sent everything in, but the kids were able to engage, so. And they love it, they, and even the students that were home, learning remotely, they were still, you know, interacting. And even when you go into a classroom and you walk around and the computer's set up with the five or six kids that are home and then, you know, they get excited to see other adults and other students and feel a part of their school community. So I think our staff, our administrators have done an amazing job of keeping our homebound students engaged and keeping them excited about learning. And it's tough. It's, it's, it's a grind, so.
That school very lively? I see. Todd?
Nice, nice and together.
Your sports are wrapping up, right? Yeah.
Spring sports coming.
Musical pushed out to June, but modified and bring some things back that are traditional in a modified way. So it looks like both proms will happen, it'll happen outdoors.
It stayed out louder.
Our proms will happen, they will be outdoors and we'll limit it to the kids in the class for those proms. No guests from other schools, no guests from other grades, no keepers. The numbers are going to be debated, the dance floors will be outside and the food will be outside.
Nice.
Nice.
No close dancing.
That's right.
If you've seen you dance, that wouldn't be a bad thing. I was probably keeping away from everyone so no one gets hurt.
I have the seniors did their castings, so like the year's really rapid.
It's moving along.
We're working on a spring concert now. I've got two dates tonight from our music director and swing out, choral and instrumental.
Nice.
So we are making steps, we're making strides and I think it's really important after a year that we need to really start getting things back that are so important to our students and our staff. I mean, the musical is a big deal for a lot of kids. And sports is a big deal for a lot of kids and music is a big deal for a lot of kids. And we've just got to continue to, you know.
I haven't, I haven't been into the intermediate school, like no kids left there at the moment and, you know, there was no reading.
Read you.
Yeah, I'm so content with what great they're going on in the high, in the intermediate school.
We're recently following the high schools lead with a whole bunch of things that Mr. Stubbage just mentioned. We're gonna run the spring sports.
Yay, great.
So we run, we're gonna run softball, we're gonna run baseball. We're in the early stages with our PTO president, Zostens, talking about how we're gonna replicate a promotion-type dance activity, but it'll be outside.
Nice.
So similar in nature to what Mr. Stubbage just mentioned, what we're talking about that right now. For the first time, starting in the fourth quarter, our virtual students will have, will have their unified arts classes. So, so we're reintroducing unified arts to all of our students who move into BRL. So they'll be able to get that full experience starting in the fourth quarter because when we start the school year, we just didn't feel that we have the capacity for that piece of their schedule. We focused on core academics. So we have a couple of things going on right now and like Mrs. Foo Major has said, I think we've turned the corner and we're heading every day to get a little bit closer to normalcy.
Nice.
Good to hear.
So the next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April twenty-second. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Here's the Tuckett Times here, if you want to take a copy of stuff on the school.